We're now recording.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. We are recording. I will call to order the regular meeting of the State Bar Board of Trustees of September 21st, 2023. We are recording. If I could ask for your welcome, please.
Bratton?
Present.
Buenaventura?
Present.
Chen, not present. Cisneros?
Here.
Duran?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Shelby?
Present.
Soell?
Present.
Stallings?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
Trejo?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We will move on to public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any item on the agenda or any item within the board's subject matter jurisdiction. State bar staff will attempt to call members of the public in the order that they appear in the attendee pool. For those of you who are appearing by Zoom video, you've got a function for virtually raising your hand. The hand icon should appear at the bottom center of your screen. Please click on that hand icon now and staff will call you at the appropriate time. If you're participating by telephone only, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. Doing so will alert staff that you would like to make a comment and we will call you in due course. Because of the time restrictions and the heavy agenda today, we will ask members of the public to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. There will be a countdown on the screen to let you know where you stand on that time limit, and the timer will start to flash in the final 10 seconds. We have several members of the public who have signed up in advance to address this this morning, so I will call on the first, Mr. Benjamin Cohen. Mr. Cohen, welcome and good morning. Mr. Cohen, are you with us today? Okay, we will move on in the list. Come back to Mr. Cohen later. Next speaker has the last four digits of their phone number as 8328. 8328. Once your mic is activated, you'll have three minutes to address the board. Welcome. No, they have not joined us yet. Okay. Next is Ms. Neha Malik. Ms. Malik, if you're with us, we will activate your mic.
Hi.
Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Neha Malik, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Legal Service Funders Network on the issue of the portfolio bar examination recommendation. The Legal Service Funders Network, LSFN, fully supports the recommendation of the working group to establish a portfolio bar exam, PBE, method of licensure to practice law in California. The LSFN is interested in California adding an additional method of attorney licensure as doing so will help address the civil legal aid crisis, improve public safety, and support diversity, equity, and inclusion. While state bar associations are tasked with licensure responsibilities, they have not until recently had evidence and data that outlines the elements of minimum competency to practice law. There is no proof that written bar exams are an effective way to measure minimum competency. Bar exams are rooted in a bias and exclusionary principles to limit who can practice law. They have been accepted as the primary method of licensure based on tradition and history and have yet to be proven to be an effective method of determining minimum competency to practice law. In contrast, supervised practice is the gold standard for most professions when it comes to licensure and public protection, and tested methods have been developed to guarantee that the review process is reliable, fair, and valid and fair. In addition, the recommended PBE supervised practice-based method of attorney licensure will help address the civil legal aid crisis, expand access to justice, and meet many of the California State Bar's other goals. The PBE provides a licensure option that can be easily modified to keep up with changes in the law, changes in the practice of law, and will not be impacted by emergencies such as pandemics and natural disasters. The working group's recommendation addresses all of the concerns about licensure alternatives that those opposed have raised and has provided evidence that attorneys licensed via supervised practice experience lower levels of harassment and misconduct than new attorneys who are licensed via written exams. In conclusion, the working group has thoughtfully and diligently explored this issue and has been shown using the data provided by experts such as Joan W. Hayworth, Deborah Merritt, and Eileen Kaufman, that high-stakes exams have intrinsic socioeconomic and able-bodied biases that cannot be solved by simply reducing the cut score or changing the bar exam question formats or subject matter areas. The recommended PBE offers a method of attorney licensure that is reliable, valid, and fair. Unlike a written bar exam, the PBE helps also helps connect the community of practicing attorneys, law schools, and new law school graduates more fully with the California State Bar. An alternative licensure option could provide a solution to the pending accommodation lawsuits that the California State Bar is facing and an accessible option for all future examinations. As a result, the LSFN supports the working group's recommendation. We encourage the Board of Trustees to approve the recommendation now and within 30 days recommend to the California Supreme Court that a PBE pilot be implemented. Related to this, all 2020 PLLs who register for the California Bar Exam in 2024 should be entitled to a full refund if they participate in the PBE pilot, and they should be given extended time to complete the MPRA and moral character determination without incurring additional fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malik. Next, we have Mr. Lucas Wright. Mr. Wright, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can, yes. Thank you. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm the Associate Director of the Bigglesworth Family Foundation. Our foundation primarily funds civil legal aid as a poverty alleviation strategy and has provided millions of dollars in grants to over 100 legal service organizations since our founding. We fully support the portfolio bar examination as an alternative method of licensure. As noted in the working group's recommendation, the proposed PBE will increase access to justice as it will, one, help bring more attorneys to rural areas and other legal deserts as a result of the increased number of new attorneys who become licensed each year. The PBE not only will result in a higher rate of licensure, but many participants will do their supervised practice in rural areas and those with low numbers of active attorneys. This premise is supported by the placements of the provisionally licensed lawyers, or PLLs. Two, it will increase the number of attorneys in the state available to serve low and modest income individuals. Again, the PLL survey and statistics show that many PLLs worked in public interest law or for small and mid-sized firms that serve low and moderate income clients. Three, it will make it more feasible for new attorneys to go into public interest law and help legal aid organizations with recruitment. The PBE allows employers to make job offers earlier and reduce the number of employers, excuse me, employees who are let go or demoted due to not passing the bar exam. Four, it will significantly increase attorney diversity. As noted in the recommendation, the pass rate for diverse examinees, despite lowering the cut score and other measures, is far below the rate for white examinees. Diverse attorneys provide additional language capacity, lived experience, and cultural expertise. The socioeconomic able-bodies and caregiving factors that impact bar exam performance cannot be resolved simply by changing the bar exam. I have attended many state bar meetings and various committees have discussed concerns relating to the costs associated with offering an alternative method of licensure. These conversations have unfortunately been void of real evidence and are assumption-based. In reality, a supervised-based licensure is not more expensive to administer than the bar exam. We've been in a discussion with the state bar staff about potential for private funders to provide financial support. While the working group believes the PBE fee will not differ much from the standard bar exam fee, they acknowledged in the report that there will be a startup cost. We have shared with the state bar that there are several funders who are interested in helping to cover the administrative overhead and startup costs. Previously, the state bar submitted a letter of intent to our foundation for a planning grant but did not submit a full application due to timing. If and when the Board of Trustees votes to recommend to the California, excuse me, California Supreme Court that the PBE pilot commence, we will invite the state bar to submit their application for funding. I'm also aware of other private foundations who are interested in receiving grant applications and supporting this effort. In conclusion, our foundation encourages the Board of Trustees to approve the PBE recommendation at this meeting and within 30 days recommend to the California Supreme Court that the PBE pilot be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Move on to Ms. Marlene Lada or Lara. We do not see you. Oh, she is here. Okay, once your mic is activated, you'll have three minutes. Welcome. Hope I got your name right on at least one of those two.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, you got the Lada for the first time, right? But it's all right. A few weeks ago, we lost a true leader and champion of increasing access to justice. Trustee Greg Knoll spent nearly 50 years leading the Legal Aid Society of San Diego. Both prior to and while in law school, I had the opportunity to intern at the Legal Aid Society of San Diego and one of their self-help clinics at the Hall of Justice and with their Director of Development. When asked about Greg Knoll, some members of the community shared that, quote, "He wasn't afraid to fight the fights that needed to be fought ever. If somebody needed to go to bat for people, not just people who were ignored for those outright harmed, he did that." Omar Passon's mentee and deputy city manager in San Jose. Knoll preached the value of servant leadership. I have never met anyone who poured as much of their heart and soul into the work as Greg does. Joanne Franciscus, the Chief Operating Officer of Legal Aid Society of San Diego. Greg was an authentic and compassionate leader who dedicated his life and life's work to enhancing equity and equality and advocating for our most vulnerable members of society. California Senate President Tony Atkins. In addition to his work at the Legal Aid Society of San Diego, Greg Knoll served on several important boards and commissions, advocating for underserved members of the community. He was appointed to the California State Bar Board of Trustees in 2022 by Senator Atkins, and his tenure was tragically cut short. During his time on the board, trustee Knoll made it crystal clear that he was in favor of California exploring licensure alternatives. At the November 2022 Board of Trustees meeting, trustee Knoll spoke at length about the value of supervised practice in the training of new attorneys and the importance of diversifying the methods of licensure. At the May 2023, after the presentation by the Blue Ribbon Commission on the future of the bar exam, trustee Knoll joined several other trustees who voiced the concerns that the BRC had failed to produce an alternative licensure recommendation. The board has previously discussed relating to the extending the provisional licensed lawyer program, and trustee Knoll encouraged the board to specifically recommend that the California Supreme Court approve an alternative licensure pilot using the 2020 PLLs as participants. He and his fellow trustees asked members of the BRC who were in favor of exploring licensure alternatives to participate in a working group that would prepare a report and recommendation for an alternative method of licensure. This group's draft report was completed in mid-August and shared with the state bar. The final recommendation is part of the agenda for the September 23rd, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting. Sadly, trustee Knoll died prior to this meeting. Based on the comments and motions trustee Knoll made during his tenure on the board, it is clear that he was very much in favor of exploring licensure alternatives. Trustee Knoll is likely the trustee with the most knowledge of and experience in public interest. We respectfully request and suggest that the board follow the lead of trustee Knoll and honor his legacy by approving by approving the portfolio bar exam recommendation and recommending the California Supreme Court that the PBE pilot commence in early 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Lada, for sharing your comments. I will just note for you in particular or anyone else who doesn't know, the Board Secretary has prepared a beautiful tribute to trustee Knoll, which will be shared momentarily during the chair's report portion of this meeting. So after public comment, I encourage you to stay on the line with us so that you can so that you can see and hear, quite frankly, much of what you've already said about trustee Knoll. So, thank you again. We'll move on to Mr. Jules Sarkar.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. Good morning. My name is Jules Sarkar. I want to comment on two different agenda items. I'll start with agenda item 702. I think that a lot of what I was going to say has already been said by other speakers, so I just want to show my gratitude for the hard work that professors Bachchan, Gardena, Rodriguez, Spencer, and Judge Reiser put into working on the alternative pathway, working groups' recommendations, and developing that report. I think that's a very fine example that there are really many dedicated and qualified legal professionals out there who will volunteer their time towards developing an admissions process that's reasonably related to a legitimate government interest. That brings me to my next comment on agenda item 701, where the Office of Admissions is requesting the right to take even more money from attorney applicants and seems to be basing that on a unsubstantiated, unexplained claim that they will spend $25.9 million on next year's exams. There's no evidence to support that whatsoever. If you look at their bar exam cost analyses from previous years, it's totally inconsistent with that. This is really testing the intelligence of this board. If you let them get away with just saying, you know, we're outspending, we're going to be spending twice as much money as we'll be making without any kind of explanation or any evidence, they're really going to continue acting with impunity on this. Now, yesterday, the state bar argued before the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals that the money in this state bar's treasury, those are state funds, those are controlled by the state, by the governor. Now, if you're not familiar with this case, it started the state bar retaliating against a disabled attorney applicant who was just asking for reasonable accommodations, and it's the one that the Office of Admissions Program Manager Tammy Campbell made the discriminatory comment that, oh, this is increasing the cost of the exam again, totally without any basis, and really just to punish him for exercising his First Amendment right to petition. But, so, yesterday, the state bar argued that, you know, the governor theoretically had control over this. Now, there are several members on this board who were appointed by the governor's office, so I have to ask whether any of you feel like you even know what this number represents, where that money is, and whether you could have any control over this, whether that's really true. I mean, $25.9 million at a rate of $3.25 per essay, that would be grading eight million essays next year. And the reason I know that's not true is because that would mean that the revenue would be much higher, that you'd have much more applicants taking the exam. So, I mean, there's, you know, it states that, oh, we've discussed this at previous meetings, but at the previous meetings, there's no evidence or explanation that comes anywhere.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sarkar, your time had elapsed, so we've got to move on to other people who are waiting in the queue. Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. Next, we've got Maria Dominguez. Ms. Dominguez, good morning. Are you with us? Once your mic is activated, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, hi. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning, Chair Duran, Board of Trustees. My name is Maria Dominguez, pronouns she/ella. I'm a member of the state bar, and for identification purposes, I serve on the Board of Directors of the East Bay La Raza Lawyers Association. I co-chair the Minority Bar Coalition of the San Francisco Bay Area and serve as a Hispanic National Bar Association Region 17 Regional Deputy. I'm a first-generation Latina attorney and diversity, equity, and inclusion leader who has devoted her career to public interest, public service, and closing the justice gap. And as someone who took the California bar exam multiple times and five times, to be precise, I'm here to ask this board to accept the pathway working group's recommendation to adopt a portfolio bar examination as an alternative pathway to licensure. The bar exam posed a significant barrier to me entering the attorney workforce to the detriment of my community and many underserved communities and to the detriment of my lifetime earning potential. I lost the opportunity to continue receiving credit toward my public interest loan forgiveness program when I had to take time off from working, and I had to take on additional debt. I'm really grateful for the working group's report, which shows a lot of the evidence-based points as to how this alternative would really help those underrepresented and students and applicants who face the challenges of facing a standardized test that, as shown, that is biased against some groups. And I really want to highlight that the 2022 report card on the diversity of California's legal profession conducted by our state bar says that despite significant growth in the proportion of attorneys who are women and people of color over the past 30 years, our attorney population does not reflect the state's diversity, and with Latinos particularly being underrepresented when we comprise 36% of the state's population, but only 6% of all the California licensed attorneys. I do want to note that the East Bay La Raza Lawyers Association submitted a letter of support, and we want to highlight that as a organization that's been around now for 45 years, we are committed to continue fundraising to help underrepresented students and Latinx students to be able to cover the financial burden faced when recent law graduates have to enter the bar examination preparation period and especially if they have to retake the exam. While we are very much committed to continue to fundraise and to help students, applicants during that time, we do believe that this portfolio bar examination would lessen the burdens all around so that our efforts could be focused on other.
Thank you, Ms. Dominguez, for your commentary. Next, we have Ms. Sandra Brooks. Good morning, Ms. Brooks. Welcome.
Good morning. Hi. Thank you, Board of Trustees, staff, for this opportunity to address agenda item 701, the trustee's approval of 2024 admissions fee increases and fee-setting policy. My name is, again, Sandra Brooks, and I am the Dean at Cal Northern School of Law and the co-chair of the California Accredited Law Schools. In addition to the public comment submitted on the Cal's behalf, the Cal's and I would again like to register our objection to the fee increases being imposed. While we recognize occasional regulatory fee increases may be part of every business's operating reality, for the Cal's to absorb increases of over 955% and 80% is unprecedented and is going to harm smaller schools and those schools and students that the Cal's serve, mostly those consumers the state bar is charged to protect. In the revised fee proposal that is part of your agenda materials, the proposed student impact of these increases is represented as an average of 224 per student. At face value, that may not sound unreasonable, but that amount is misleading and offers a false sense of equity. The direct cost to smaller schools such as Cal Northern is over twice that much and three times what those costs are currently. This increase will undoubtedly have to be passed on to our students and will set back the important progress Cal's have made towards equity, diversity, and inclusion in the legal profession, which is not only a state mandate, but something I know is important to us all. In the event an increase is still justified, I would like to thank staff for recommending a tiered pricing structure for your consideration and encourage the trustees to support option three, the tiered structure that provides all schools pay $90 per enrolled student. This option is the most fair and equitable and will have the least impact on our students. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Dean. We will go back up to see if Mr. Cohen has joined us. Looks like he has. Mr. Cohen, welcome and good morning.
Good morning. I would like to speak first to the proposed changes to the operations and cost-cutting for the February 2024 exam and then also for the July 2024 exam advanced discussion. Last meeting, many of you weren't here, but at the August 10 meeting on the same subject matter, I gave public comment about the usage of body cams as a way to ensure that all accommodations can be applied remotely if other applicants are given that option. And former trustee, the late trustee Knoll, liked that idea, spoke in favor of it during deliberations. I'm very sad that he's not here during these deliberations and action to go forward with that. I'm hoping everyone else will. Even if he's not around here, I did want to clarify a couple of the points he made on August 10. He said that specifically the board wasn't thinking hard enough to not have thought of ideas like what I had suggested before. I did want to point out that I've been making that request since 2020 for that exact proposal. The state bar was aware of it. Staff rejected it on the basis that it would be too expensive and burdensome to make those customized exam security measures for the disabled applicants, and they would be less burdensome to force them to test in person even during 2020, even for those, including me, who were immunocompromised. So, it wasn't that you didn't think of it, it's that staff at least didn't bring it to your attention. They just rejected it for their own burden reasons. I know I've spoken and been criticized by this board for accusing the state bar staff of just wanting to avoid burden, but that is not just speculation about not getting my way or disagreement. That is their own words, their own reason for advancing the precursor of the Testing Accommodations Rules Revision. There was a proposal in December 2020, January 2021 to make a lot of those same rule changes that Lisa Cummins advanced on the basis that staff needed the rules to be less burdensome on staff, even if it made it harder for disabled people to apply for accommodations, and that staff just needed a little more leeway, and she failed to get that through public comment on return, and then came up with this veneer of doing forums first, making it look like it was to reform the issues, and then advancing the downgrades under the auspice that they were framed as upgrades, and only after public comment actually made them insufficient upgrades instead of downgrades. And I know-
I'm going to have to interrupt. I apologize. Your time has expired. Thank you for your comments. We'll check to see whether the telephone number with the last four digits, 8328, has joined the meeting. Okay, we don't see them. At this point, I'd like to know if there are any members of the public here in person who have signed up to address the board. Looks like not. Madam Secretary, will you please recognize anyone who has raised their hands remotely to address the board?
We have Ray Hayden.
Mr. or Ms. Hayden, welcome. You'll have three minutes to address the board.
That's Ray Hayden. Thank you very much. I called early this morning to make sure this was the right place to come here. I agree with everything Mr. Cohen says in relation to testing accommodations. I unfortunately don't really address that. I kind of do, but I kind of don't in the things I talk about, and I agree with everything that Jules Sarkar said pretty much about everything, even though we ran out of time. And I appreciate everybody else who made all the comments in support of, I've communicated with Dean Gardena about a couple of different things, and I greatly appreciate her and the other members of that group that have come together to put together the submission for you all. And my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you want, is that this is to kind of accept that program, the PBE portfolio bar exam, into for public comments, and I would greatly support absolutely that. Anything is better than nothing. Now, I just want to address a group of folks like myself who might be not able to participate that. I would hope they could be, and I could see that it could be done that way, is I'm in Florida. I am never going to move to California, and I'm never going to set up my office there. I would set up my office in Florida, and I would do remote work, and if I could participate remotely, that'd be fantastic. However, I've come up with two ways in which you can save millions and millions of dollars. Both include creating an exam, exactly what, kind of, almost exactly what you got today, or an alternative, which is an onboarding program, which to me is far superior in every way. The military uses it, and so does the FAA, where people have to get 100% to pass. I also want to call out Mr. Tony for some great things that he said. Sometimes things just lock my brain up, and one of the things he said is something I've been saying for years and years. Minimum competency is actually insulting. He said that over a year or so ago, if I recall right. And another thing that people on the Board of Trustees had said at least twice, and Mr. Tony said at least once, is that make your own multiple-choice exams. Why not? Because first-year law student exam, which I had to sit through six times because of the 80% failure rate, that thing there has its own multiple-choice questions. Sure, they may not be as fair or whatever, but they're there, okay? And you can easily enough create the questions for the rest of the exam. I have the full faith in Cal Bar because I've seen they've done some truly amazing things. So, just right, that's the first thing. The second thing is the onboarding process where Cal Bar can create their own, and they do create incredible public, you know, and I've actually put more discussion in my public comments, so I'll leave that there with you there. But the other thing I'm going to mention about that was the ability that that requires us to truly learn. Here's the thing. How many people remember? Nope, that's my time. We're going out. Anyway, so how many people would remember what they studied on the bar exam, what they prepped for, what they studied for to pass the bar exam? Because the bar exam is not the practice of law, and neither is the study of law, but the onboarding process will have things memorized. Thank you for your time. Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden.
Next, we have Todd Hill.
Mr. Hill, welcome and good morning.
Good morning, members of the Board of Trustees and staff. My name is Todd Hill. I address you today with profound belief in the principles of justice and the vital role that institutions like the State Bar of California could play in upholding these principles. My purpose is to emphasize the urgency of addressing a matter that strikes at the core of our civil rights, particularly within the legal profession. The central question that resonates is one of time. How long should a citizen endure when the state bar has an inherent duty to address the misconduct of its agents? For members of the public, I here refer to my now reinitiated case in the federal courts, number 2:23- That number again is 2:23-CV-01298-JLS-PD. To provide background, the State Bar received the fully executed summons and second amended complaint per its express terms, since it did not waive service of summons, September 20, 2023. I enrolled in the People's College of Law in the fall of 2019. State Bar placed the institution on probation in December 2022. As of today, after completing the entirety of PCL's offered program in over four years, I still not have a viable degree, viable transcripts, return of monies owed, nor viable path forward. At all times, the State Bar was both constructively and expressly aware of PCL's non-compliance, and instead of enforcing compliance, actively assisted the school contrary to its duties as sole regulator in the sphere of legal education services. In the matter before us, time is of the essence. How long should a citizen be asked to wait for the State Bar to take action? The facts are stark, the infractions extensively documented, and the harm inflicted upon us individually as a group remains immediate, palpable, and deeply distressing. This is not a mere quest. It is an impassioned plea for justice. It is crucial to recognize that in this case, the due to the State Bar may be even more profound, considering that some of the harms inflicted upon affected citizens may be arduous to rectify. This consideration should not serve as pretext for delaying action, but rather is a compelling reason to act with unwavering determination. Delaying justice due to potential complexity could inadvertently intensify suffering and erode trust in legal system, undermining the pursuit of truth and resolution. The right to justice is not an abstract ideal, is the cornerstone of a just society. When these rights are violated, it is not merely a legal obligation, but a moral imperative for the State Bar to respond promptly and resolutely. In this case, the urgency cannot be overstated, is a call for bold, decisive action. And in what were justice delayed is tantamount to justice denied, we look to the Board of Trustees to rekindle hope, right the wrongs, and affirm that justice is not a distant concept, but a living, breathing force that must prevail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Next, we have Mitchell Winnick.
Mr. Winnick, welcome and good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Mitchell Winnick, and I serve as the President and Dean of Monterey College Law, one of your longstanding California accredited law schools. I come to you along with my colleague Dean Sandy Brooks to speak to Item 701 on the agenda, which is the fee increases, specifically those proposed for the increase in the annual report fee for our California accredited law schools. I would like to request that the board remove or defer this specific issue from this meeting vote. I'm requesting this for the following three reasons. First, trustees will note that although there's a request for a 955% increase, the executive summary of this item provides no alternative recommendations for cost-reduction strategies. Therefore, you're not being provided the information necessary to make an informed decision at this time. Number two, the executive summary presented on this item does not reflect that there were cost-saving issues, cost-saving recommendations and changes made to the accredited law school rules in 2021 that have yet to be implemented by the State Bar staff. Therefore, these cost-saving changes are not reflected in the 955% increase request and should be considered first. Finally, number three, in the meetings preceding the rule change I just referenced, there were other cost-saving suggestions made by the law school related to dual accredited law schools and the frequency and format of site visits and annual reports that also have not been addressed by staff or the Committee of Bar Examiners. Therefore, I request that the board send this item back to the staff and to the Committee of Bar Examiners for further review before being resubmitted to the board with a full review of the cost-saving strategies and not just an expense increase. I am in full support of the board's need and concern to address an $8.4 million deficit, but I'm certain that this board intends to address this fully informed with accurate data. Those are my comments related to Item 701. With my remaining few seconds, if I could also just say, I'm in full support of the previous comments in favor of adoption of the alternative licensing pathway for the reasons that many of the other speakers have spoken to, and you're to be congratulated about considering this forward-thinking proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean. Looks like we have some work.
Next, we have Jessica Juarez.
Ms. Juarez, welcome and good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Juarez. I have provided public comment at several Board Trustees meetings. For those of you who do not know me, I graduated from Golden Gate University School of Law in May of 2020. I am a first-generation Latina graduate and professional. English is my second language, and I am a single parent of a teenager. I am currently a provisionally licensed lawyer and work as an eviction defense fellow at Legal Assistance to the Elderly, where I have been employed since 2021. While I and the other PLLs are appreciative of the extension of the PLL program to December 31, 2025, the additional three years does not solve the challenge of trying to prepare for and take the bar exam. PLLs like me have taken the bar exam two, three, four, or even more times. We struggle to prepare for subsequent bar exams as we are dedicated to our clients and need to earn income. It also does not solve the cultural issues that licensure applicants like me face when it comes to trying to take a high-stakes exam under intense conditions, including but not limited to language fluency, imposter syndrome, and caregiver responsibilities. As the board is aware, the PLL certification I received, along with over 900 other 2020 California law school graduates to practice law under supervision, was created in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is essential for my livelihood and ability to practice law that the Board of Trustees address the recommendation for an alternative method of licensure now. As the process involves many steps, including but not limited to, one, the Board of Trustees must pass a motion supporting the exploration of an alternative method of licensure; two, the State Bar staff would then prepare materials for submission to the California Supreme Court; three, the California Supreme Court would consider the recommendation issued's ruling; four, if the California Supreme Court approves an alternative licensure pilot, the participants, both PLLs and their supervisors, would register. The pilot participants, I'm sorry, five, the pilot participants must have time to complete the supervised practice term; six, the pilot participants' portfolios must be reviewed and graded. If the PBE pilot was to commence in early to mid-2024, it would be feasible to complete all of these steps and sync up the release of the PBE results along with the release of the California bar exam results in either November 2024 or May 2025. This would allow sufficient time for PLLs like me to have their licensure status resolved prior to the expiration of our PLL licenses on December 31, 2025. Having practiced law for the past two years as a PLL, both my employer and I are confident that I possess more than minimum competency to practice law. In the event that I do not receive my full bar license by the end of 2025, my future is uncertain. I will at that point have represented hundreds of clients and yet might quote-quote "lose my license" simply because I am unable to pass an exam that has a success rate for people like myself that is far below my white peers. Even without any issues of misconduct and having practiced public interest law for more than five years, I would automatically be deemed ineligible to practice law. I urge you to renew your prior recommendation to the California Supreme Court to use the 2020 PLLs as participants in the pilot alternative pathway to licensure now. We respectfully request that the Board of Trustees does not delay further in addressing this important issue that will help to increase access to justice, diversify the legal profession, and protect the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juarez.
Sorry. Next, we have Rianne Pacheco.
Ms. Pacheco, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Board of Trustees. Thank you for taking the time to make, for me to make public comments today. My name is Rianne Pacheco. I'm with the Legal Aid Association of California. A lot of our sentiments have already been shared today regarding business item 702. We have read the report and are in complete support of what it is trying to achieve and applaud the hard work that has been done to develop the report in time for today's meeting, when the BRC met 19 times over two years. Although the vote today is to circulate the report for public comment, we urge the Board of Trustees to approve the PBE pilot today and not wait until the November meeting vote, as it could put the State Bar and the court in a position similar to 2022, with the clock ticking down rapidly. Legal service organizations would like to be able to get their PLLs on a path to licensure ASAP so that they can fill the open staff positions and use these well-trained lawyers who have been working for more than three years in legal experience to the fullest of their capacity, rather than being limited to the terms of the PLL program. It is well-known at this point that the bar exam is a barrier to diversity in the legal profession, so we urge you today to keep this momentum and improve the PBE pilot today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pacheco. Madam Secretary?
We do not have any additional members of the public wishing to address the board.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, everyone who shared your time and your thoughts with us this morning. Certainly, a lot of well-considered heartfelt comments. Let's move on with our agenda. Next is the approval of the July 20th and 21st open session minutes. Item 10 on our agenda. Trustees, are there any corrections or modifications to the minutes? Don't see any. Can I ask for a motion to approve as presented, please? Trustee Stallings with the motion.
Second.
I heard somebody, but I didn't see it. I apologize. Trustee Buenaventura with the second. Madam Secretary, we have the roll.
Bratton. Thank you. Not present. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye, with respect to the minutes of the second day when I was present, abstain from the first day.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye. I see that trustee Bratton has joined us. This is a motion on the approval of the minutes. I see your thumbs up. Trustee Bratton will abstain from that vote.
10 ayes, 0 nays. Minutes are adopted.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to certainly a very, very sad, sad portion of our agenda today. As has been commented in the intervening time between our last Board of Trustees meeting and today, trustee Greg Knoll passed away unexpectedly peacefully at home, from what I understand, and so I'm grateful for that. But certainly, he has left a void on the profession in general, on this board in particular. And so the Board Secretary, Luisa Arribatia, has put together a tribute to Mr. Knoll and his many years of service to the state and to the bar, and so I will turn it over to her. Thank you for that, Luisa. It really is just something that you don't expect to do when you work with somebody like Greg. You sort of just see the strength of his convictions, the passion in his work, and you think this guy's going to be around forever, but of course, none of us are. We just never know when our time will come. I have to say that at the last board meeting, there was a disagreement between trustee Knoll and myself, reflected in a vote, and I called him the next day to talk about that, because I wanted, I wanted him to know and understand sort of where I came from, where I was coming from, that I understood where he was coming from, but just didn't necessarily agree. And he, as always, was gracious and a little bit instructive to me, which I really appreciated. Certainly, he had a little bit more experience as a lawyer and in life, and he took the opportunity during that phone call to give me some words of wisdom and encouragement, which I gratefully accepted and acknowledged and will stay with me for a very long time in whatever step I take in my career next, of service at least, because he was indeed just a truly remarkable example of service to poor people, to working-class people, and to the profession itself. So we've heard many comments from folks in the public, and we saw the quotes from the various people who honored him. I would like to open the floor to any trustee who wishes to offer any comments at this time. Trustee Soell, please.
Thank you, Chair Duran. Trustee Knoll was a fellow appointee of the Senate, of Senate Pro Tem Tony Atkins. And I know that the two of them had a very, very long friendship that spanned many, many years. And so I was very, just deeply saddened hearing the news of trustee Knoll's passing. And even though he wasn't on the board for an extended period of time, his presence was one of someone that was very astute, someone that was very insightful, and someone that brought his years of experience in the legal profession to the work of this board as well as to our work around thinking about those that were underserved and in need of legal assistance. And while his tenure on the board was not extended, I think we saw from the commemorative that was put together, as well as some of the comments that we heard, we just know that he was a giant in the legal aid world, a career that spanned, you know, decades, leading the San Diego Legal Aid Society. You know, I am not, I'm not sure how we do things here in terms of what we can do to honor folks in, from a, in sort of perpetuity sort of standpoint. You know, I come from the state legislature, and in the state legislature, often there are there are specific bills that may name a portion of law for a legislator. There are other things that we do to name, you know, sometimes there are offices that are named after legislators, those sorts of things like that. And I just wonder if it's fitting for us to, as a board, to think about something that we might be able to do that would allow trustee Knoll's sort of life presence to be honored in the work that we do. I'm not exactly sure what that might be, but I would offer that as a tribute that this board could raise up and uplift to our former trustee and our former colleague. I think that's something I would offer, maybe the staff to try to take a look at, but would be in favor of us pursuing something like that.
Thank you, Arnie. I see. Mr. Bratton, please.
Yes. I knew Greg for probably over 40 years. Those of you who probably don't know, I actually am from San Diego, and I practiced
and I practiced law in San Diego for 17 years before I ended up in Fresno, which I currently am. And when I was a young attorney, there was no public defender. There was none of these things down there. We all, a number of us got together and formed different organizations, and some of which are still there today. And through the course of those various activities, I got to know Greg. I knew him a long time. And when he was appointed to the, I lost contact with him, of course, when I ended up in Fresno. But when he was appointed to the bar and I saw him here for the first time, I went, oh, perfect. This is a guy we need on the bar. And when I heard about his passing, it was just, the only thing I remember being able to say was, oh, no. You know, like Ruben said, you just don't anticipate things like that happening. I knew he wasn't particularly well. But I, he's one of those people in my life, if I look back certainly in my career, that had a tremendous impact. And I think, you know, those of you that have heard me rant and rave about various things on the bar, access and equality and all those different things. I think being associated with him early in my career has a lot to do with how it shaped my thought process in the profession. So I will miss him, and I appreciate all the comments about trying to do something in his honor from the bar. So I'll miss you, Greg.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. I'm going to move on to another similar commentary, and that is recently Judge James Herman passed away. He was an elected member of the State Bar Board of Governors, which preceded the Board of Trustees and the structure and the framework of the State Bar. He served as president of the State Bar between 2002 and 2003. Following that service as bar president, Judge Herman served on the Committee of Bar Examiners, the Provisional Licenseur Working Group, where Trustee Chen and I got to know him and certainly benefited from his insight and his wisdom and the trustees nominating committee. So it could very well be that for some of us around this table, he was instrumental in getting the nod from the Supreme Court. And so, our condolences go out to Judge Herman's family, along with our thanks for his very significant career of service to the State Bar and its previous formulation and currently. Okay, next, if I could ask for a resolution to be placed on the screen, and we'll see what it's about as soon as it comes up. It is my honor to share with the board and with everyone watching these words of thanks to trustee Mark Broughton, who is outgoing after a very long tenure of service here at the State Bar. I hope that you will indulge me as I read the resolution so that those who are listening by telephone and not necessarily on video can know what a wonderful thing it is for Mr. Broughton to have served the bar. Whereas the members of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar of California express our sincerest gratitude to Mark Broughton for nearly seven years of tireless service to the State Bar. And whereas Mark Broughton's contributions as a member of the Board of Trustees spanned the historic transformation of the State Bar to a purely regulatory agency, a process in which he played a critical leadership role, forging the path between the old and the new State Bar. And whereas Mark Broughton's participation in the former California Commission on Access to Justice and his tireless advocacy for increased access to court and legal services in rural communities exemplified his deep dedication to improving access for all Californians. And whereas Mark Broughton's illustrious legal career spanning from San Diego to Fresno, California, has encompassed criminal law, civil litigation, and personal injury, demonstrating his versatility and dedication to protecting the constitutional rights of his clients. And whereas Mark Broughton has represented clients in over 200 jury trials across federal and state courts and is regularly called upon by the Fresno County Superior Court to handle special circumstances and death penalty cases. And whereas Mark Broughton's active involvement in the Fresno County Bar Association, his dedicated work with the Northern California Innocence Project, and his roles as a mock trial attorney, judge, team coach, and educator have all contributed to the enrichment and growth of the legal profession, showcasing his commitment to mentoring and fostering the next generation of legal leaders. Resolve that the State Bar Board of Trustees expresses its profound appreciation to Mark Broughton for his exceptional service, leadership, and enduring contributions to ensuring that the State Bar of California truly fulfills its public protection mission. I ask that this be adopted by unanimous vote of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar of California on September 21st, 2023, and we'll sign it with a lot of joy and gratitude for everything that I've just read and so much that has gone unsaid. Mark, thank you so much for what you have brought to this agency and to this state. You call it ranting and raving. I call it communicating and debating, and it's been truly a pleasure to serve with you. The motion is, I'm sorry, the resolution is on the screen. I'd like to put the motion on the floor. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Stallings, seconded by trustee Cisneros. Trustee Soel, would you like to add to the commentary or debate?
I was just going to add a second, but we welcome the opportunity to talk about Mr. Broughton. You know, I think one of the things that I remember very distinctly is that when I first joined the bar, I really felt a little distant from it, just because I, you know, I'm not a lawyer. And in listening to, as you just mentioned, Chair Duran, Mr. Broughton's comments, you know, it got me a lot closer to many of the issues that come before this body, particularly issues as it relates to access to justice. I can also remember one of the things that really made an imprint on me. I'm a sports guy, and I remember that when we were all a part of our sort of retreat activities, we had to bring something that was memorabilia or really, really important to us. And I remember Mr. Broughton brought this picture of himself and Casey Stengel and, you know, the famous sort of baseball manager. And as a young kid, and I remember just how proud he was of sharing that with all of us. And as I mentioned, as a sports guy, it really touched me as well because that was, I brought something about my dad, and my dad was a big, as folks know, was a big track star. So it made imminent sense to me and made me feel much sort of closer to him. And so, I am deeply honored to have served on this board with him. I wish him the best of luck sort of going forward, and I just really, really, truly appreciate the contributions that he's made to this body.
Thank you, trustee Soel. Trustees Shelby, please.
I first had the opportunity to work closely with Mark in the Ginnie process. We were interviewing Ginnie leadership after I had joined the board. And then, I remember very distinctly, we walked over to the hotel after our first board meeting in person post-COVID and had this really great conversation. And so, you always bring unique perspective. You always represent Fresno and the Valley. And so, just thank you for your service. Thank you for being on the Audit Committee. Your voice is going to get missed, but you have definitely left an indelible mark here. So what a pleasure to serve with you.
Thank you, Melanie. Trustee Stallings.
Mark laughs, and I think I know why he's laughing. But from one Central Valley brother to another, your voice has really resulted in change. And as we sit here around the table, we sit here around the table of a very different bar. And when you ask yourself, why is this bar so different? It's because of the work of Mark Broughton. Seven years ago, things looked a lot different. We were asking a lot of the same questions, but we were dealing with very different issues, issues that related to reform. And Mark was one of those board members who really took up the banner of reform and really just catapulted us into our next evolution as a public agency. And I think that should not go unsaid. So, Mark, thank you for always saying what you felt to be right. We are oftentimes on opposite sides of the argument, but I always came away with more of a respect and admiration for you and for your heart for the people that you serve. You brought a criminal defense perspective, and as a prosecutor, sometimes those things don't mesh, but we always emerged, I think, stronger in our friendship. And so, you'll be missed on the board, having that fellow Cal County perspective. And as you ride off into the sunset, I hope that you will not be a stranger, and that if we need to rope you in, maybe we can do that. But thank you for your service. You will be missed, and thank you for your contribution.
You're here. We'll call for the vote unless anyone wants to add anything.
I just wanted to just briefly say, Mark, that your tenure at the bar really matches mine, and we've been through a lot. And just to kind of echo some of Brandon's comments, you know, I think your legacy, part of it will be the work that you did to push us to define what does it mean for us to be an organization that is committed to increasing access and increasing diversity. And while I too did not always agree with you, I really appreciated your challenging us to make meaningful those commitments in a way that made sense, and not just us sitting around this table, but to the public that we serve. And so, I just want to credit you for that and tell you that, in my view, that is a really important part of your legacy. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Leah. The motion is by Stallings, the second by Cisneros. We'll take a vote, and then Mr. Broughton, if you would care to comment, I would certainly welcome that as well.
Broughton. Buenaventura.
Aye.
Chen.
Aye.
Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Shelby.
Aye.
Soel.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo.
Aye.
Duran.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
I will just say, Mark, that once you step off the board, Brandon no longer has any competition for best rest.
Well, thank you, everyone. I was certainly not expecting any of that. I do appreciate it. It's funny, I have been reminiscing a little bit with some of the people that have been around for a while. Bridget, for example, we were chatting about, she was the antagonist when I first came there and was the only one screaming at the board because we were violating any trust laws and all of these things. And now, here she is working for the bar, you know. And I remember when I first got on the board, I was assigned to the Governance and the Interest Task Force, which I think Brandon was probably the only one here who got a piece of that. And there were a lot of meetings, there was a lot of discussion, shall I say. I had a number of trustees in my face, literally, screaming at me because I, one of the first things I did, I asked Elizabeth at the time, who was our executive director, I said, can I have a flow chart or an organizational chart of this organization? What I got was about a two-to-three-inch pile of paper, and you couldn't put it together. There were so many commissions and so forth and so on. And one of the things that I said was, well, what's our mission statement? What are we supposed to be doing here as an organization? Got some grief about that, too. But now, we have a mission statement, and it drives us. And I like to think that that was one of the things that I did that really contributed. This has been, the last year for me has been very tough in terms of the board because of COVID opening up the courts and me having so many obligations there that I've missed more meetings than I ever missed in the first six years that I was on the board. And I do, I really do appreciate and think back on all of the people that I've met here, the professional people and the dedicated people that really are working hard to not only protect the people of the state of California, but to help people with less means to have access to this judicial system. It's a huge undertaking that we have here. I've, you know, struggled with what type of agency are we, but I'm grateful where we're headed. The organization is completely different now than it was then. There's no question about it. My first meeting, there was like 20-some-odd board members, as I remember, a gigantic room down in San Diego when we were still doing the annual retreats, for those of you old enough to remember that. It was a big deal, but it was all for lawyers. We got together and had seminars and all these kind of things, but it had nothing really to do with protecting the public. So my first vote on the board was that we eliminated that, which was something that I personally enjoyed. And so, just in that regard, we're completely different. And I just think that with Leah's direction, she's right. I mean, the things that she's been through is unbelievable. It's like every year, you would come and say, okay, what's the next thing that's going to happen that we aren't expecting? I'm not going to go into all of the activities and things that have happened over the years, but when I first came in, there were lawsuits all over the place, and there were all kinds of crazy drama and things going on. And Leah has managed us through pretty much all of that. I want to thank the staff, too, not only Leah, whom I just hold in tremendous high regard, but Donna, who's here also, who stepped up when needed to be stepped up. I see Steve back there, Steve, and the other Steve, who I apologize for giving so much grief to over the years in some of these votings and these things. But it's been a healthy, I think, discussion, healthy. You know, I guess I'm sad to leave because of all the people that I've met and the opportunities that I've had to serve. But I do want to say, there is one thing that I will be grateful never to have to encounter again, and that is Appendix I. So anyway, I want to thank everybody. I was certainly not expecting any of that. Ruben, congratulations to you, too. Thank you.
Okay, I'm told that Brandon to provide remarks. So I'll hand them gavel.
That deliciously ambiguous item, I'll dive right in. So, Ruben, unflappable, calm, and steady. These words attempt to describe your leadership over the past two especially tumultuous years. You've ushered the State Bar into a new era of accountability, resiliency, and transparency. Through your unique skill set, you have forged lasting relationships with the legislature and with legislative staff. Your contributions to improving the public's view of the practice of law is borne out through your leadership style and how you conduct yourself as a professional. You are an example to lawyers in California and to the public on how an honorable lawyer conducts themselves and the profession. Thanks you for giving your time, your talent, and in investing those things, you leave not only the State Bar in a better state than when you first arrived, but the profession. So enjoy your retirement. Know that your good humor, early morning kind of Arnold Schwarzenegger-esque pumping iron sessions and calming presence will be missed. And I have some further words from people much more important than I to read, but I just wanted to open up the floor to anybody who wishes to talk about our remarkable leader, Ruben Duran. So who would like to go? All at once. All right, trustee Shelby.
I've, I shared this with Ruben recently, that although he is leaving the I've, I shared this with Ruben recently, that although he is leaving the state bar, we are not leaving each other. It has been such a pleasure to serve with you, to serve under your leadership. One of the things I appreciate the most is, as a public member who has never practiced the law, you and I have had some really interesting and dynamic conversations. And what I respect about you is you know how to disagree respectfully, but you know how to build relationship. And it's been really, you know, being a connector for 25-plus years, it's been rewarding to watch you do that. You make everyone on this board feel unique and valued. And I believe you do that with the staff, but I know that to be the case in terms of the people on this board. And although you are leaving, I am confident that you are going to be engaged in some sort of way. I respect the fact that you are leaving as you make room for new leadership to spread their wings and to create and build their own infrastructure. But I just have enjoyed thoroughly getting to know you, your family, and I think the best is yet to come for you. So, thank you so very much for your service and your leadership, and I'm very proud to call you my friend.
So, Chair Duran, you know, I have not, I've obviously known you for a very long time, but what I do know is what I've seen. And as an elected official myself, I've chaired many meetings, and you can run a meeting. I mean, you can, you are on point, you are someone that is very thoughtful, and you foster the communication with the group. And I think that really enables you to do the great work that you have done. And you have made me feel comfortable in even my first day here, that I, I'm usually reluctant to talk, but with your, the way you run your meeting, the style that you have, and the, just the ease and confidence that you have, and the fairness that you exhibit when you are chairing these meetings has been an incredible joy to watch and experience. And so I'm just surprised you're not an elected official, and maybe that's coming, who knows? But I just, bravo to you and your leadership and all that you've done, so thank you.
Trustee Cisneros.
Thank you, Brandon. Ruben, you've been here all the years I've been here. I've been honored to work with you. As everyone has mentioned, you're very skilled, very experienced, and very dedicated. But I think the thing I marvel at the most is you really are engaged, and you really care. And a lot of people don't bring that emotion, their heart, and their soul, and their care, caring into the work they do. You do it. It's impressive. It's impossible to miss, and it means the world to me, and I believe everybody else in this room that you've come in contact with. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for being a real guiding force in my time here, and somehow you got me to sign up for a leadership position, so you must be persuasive. But thank you for all the work you've done for the bar, and congratulations. Thanks.
I am, I've been a fan of yours for 30 years. And I've known you to be a leader and also be very earnest and humble, even as a young, you know, ASB president at Bosco Tech, right? So, when surprisingly I was appointed to this organization and got to see you at work again, I'm inspired because I think that you've continued with that same humility and earnestness throughout your career, now 30 years. So now that I've seen you again, I'm grateful. I speak for the people of California, we're grateful, and I continue to be inspired, so thank you.
All right, our general counsel. Or do you want to go? Sorry, let me go to Highland first.
Hi, sorry I couldn't be there in person, but Ruben, it has been such a privilege to watch you lead and lead us through some of the most difficult decisions our organization has faced. You, I mean, I echo what everyone else has said about your leadership skills and making folks feel heard and encouraging conversation and discussion, even when there is dissent. And to just really exhibit so much humility in the face of so much difficulty has been so inspiring to me. I particularly value our work together on the provisional licensure working group. I think that's where you and I really got to know each other, dealing under time pressure with a challenging charge that we were given. And you really just showed your deep commitment to service to the public, and so it's really been a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
General counsel.
Mr. Chair, I'll keep it brief. I do echo everyone's sentiments, but I wanted to relay that I find you to be a great role model for those who are in the legal profession and also those who are committing their time to public service. You have been a zealous advocate for the state bar, you've done it passionately, and even in the most difficult circumstances, you have kept your calm and you've always been respectful, and you've given everyone an opportunity to share your thoughts, their thoughts and their opinions. And you found a way, in a very nuanced and delicate way, to allow those that don't have a voice to really be heard. I value that, and I thank you on behalf of everyone for your service to the state bar, and I'm sure there's so much more ahead. Thank you.
All right, Leah. All right, I had to write it out. So, others have and will continue to speak to your many tactical accomplishments and the foundation for a productive partnership you have laid for us with the California Legislature. These accolades are deserved and will result in your tenure being remembered in posterity. And I really want to say that, and I mean that. But I want to speak to something else more personal. You are truly the best boss I have ever had. And that includes your seven a.m. or eight a.m. conversation this morning, where you wanted to share some thoughts with me and were thinking of me on what is really your day. This is not because you are in some way lax in exercising oversight over me or any of us at the bar, but to the contrary, you have inspired me with your work ethic and with your dedication. I know that you have a real job and real clients who depend on you, and yet I cannot think of a single instance where I have needed you and you haven't been there. You have made yourself available, not just to me, but to this entire team. There isn't a phone call or a meeting that you haven't taken. Beyond that, you are funny and you are warm, you are truly likable, you are humble, and you are disarmingly sharp and quick, able to fully ascertain the facts and form an opinion. You are not afraid to act, you know right from wrong, but you're also pragmatic, and that has helped us move forward. You have truly motivated me to try to work even half as hard and half as smartly, half as effectively and humanely as you do, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. On a lighter note, I wanted to do some kind of poem. So what I did is I put some attributes into ChatGPT, and I asked it to draft a limerick to Ruben. That would be G-rated. So I put in, "Best boss I have ever had, loves to wear pins, lifts weights, never declined a phone or a phone call or a meeting, has built relationships that will outlive his term, blazed a new trail for someone in the chair role, and doesn't take himself too seriously." So here's what we got from ChatGPT. "A boss who is truly the best wears pins on his well-lifted chest, takes calls and meets all, builds bridges that won't fall while blazing a trail with jest." So, thank you.
So, is it lunchtime?
No, we have something else to read.
All right, so, closing out my portion, legislature as a token, the legislature as a token of their esteem for you has passed this resolution, so the Assembly, and I'm going to read it into the record now, and if you'll bear with me, because, I mean, it's your fault, your compliments are quite lengthy. This is, "By the Honorable Anthony Rinden, 62nd Assembly District, and the Honorable Thomas J. Umberg, 34th Senatorial District, relative to commending Ruben Duran. Whereas, Ruben Duran is completing his tenure as a member of the State Bar of California Board of Trustees, and in recognition of the valuable leadership he provided to that organization and his exemplary record of career and civic leadership, he is deserving of special public commendations. And whereas, appointed by then Speaker of the Assembly Anthony Rinden to the Board of Trustees in 2018, Ruben Duran was appointed as Chair by the California Supreme Court in 2021, was reappointed in 2022, and will conclude his term as Chair on September 21st, 2023. And during his tenure, he also played the role of Vice Chair of the Board's Committee on Regulation and Discipline. And whereas, a managing partner of the Ontario Office of Best Bess and Krieger LLP, Ruben serves as a city attorney for the cities of Fontana in Ontario, and is General Counsel to the Crescent City Harbor District and Oxnard Harbor District, which operates the port, Waynimi, thank you, in Ventura County, and he previously held the positions of city attorney for the cities of Adelanto and Desert Hot Springs, and General Counsel of the Fontana Unified School District. And whereas, a proud graduate of the University of California, San Diego, Ruben earned a law degree from the University of California College of the Law, San Francisco, where he was a two-time National Moot Court champion in the Hispanic National Bar Association's National Moot Court Competition. And whereas, over the years, Ruben has shared his leadership with numerous civic organizations, including as President of the Los Angeles City Attorneys Association of Board Counsel for the Southern California Association of Governments, that's quite the acronym there, I'm sure, which represents 191 jurisdictions across six counties and has held memberships on the boards of the Institute for Local Government, Coro Southern California, and Southeast Arts and Cultural Foundation. And whereas, having worked for and with numerous public agencies throughout his career, Ruben has earned a sterling reputation for his interdisciplinary and comprehensive approach to practicing public law and is renowned for his expertise in open government, elections law, land use planning issues, and complex conflicts of interest. And among his numerous professional accolades, he was awarded the 2022 Brown, Mulligan, Roca Distinguished Public Service Award from the International Municipal Lawyers Association. And whereas, during his tenure on the State Bar of California Board of Trustees, Ruben Duran has provided effective leadership, and through his hard work and unwavering commitment, he has compiled an impressive record of career and civic achievements, a record that has now earned him the admiration and respect of those persons who have ever had the privilege of associating with him. Now, therefore be it. And then, resolved by the Assemblymember Anthony Redon and Senator Thomas Umberg, that Ruben Duran be commended for his exemplary, excuse me, exemplary leadership as a member of the State Bar of California Board of Trustees, applauded for his outstanding record of legal and civic leadership, and extend sincere best wishes for continued success in the future. Sir?
and spontaneous, in response to all of what I just heard, and it's gratifying and humbling to know that the work that we all do collectively touches other people's lives and makes a difference. And I can't thank you all enough for your kind words and for their recognition. It's not, it's a little overwhelming, but it's truly appreciated. And I'm going to, I'm going to actually say that, as I thought about the past two years, the overarching themes and the words that come to my mind are gratitude and hope. And there's, you know, I've got a list of folks that I have a tremendous amount of gratitude for, and I'm going to start with the state bar staff, for the hundreds of people who come to work virtually and/or in person every day to fulfill the mission of this agency to protect the public through the proper and mission, regulation, and discipline of attorneys, and to ensure access to justice for 40 million Californians. It is, and I've said it before in some variation, and so I apologize if you feel like this is a little bit of a broken record, but it is truly a necessary and high calling, the work that the state bar does. And those of us who are privileged to sit around this table as appointed leadership of this agency would do well to remember the unique privilege and, quite frankly, the very serious need and command to do that work honorably, honestly, passionately, and with a little bit of a sense of humor here and there, and resilience. And that is what I have seen exhibited throughout my tenure here, both as the Chair and since I joined the board in 2018. Just, you know, the many, many staff members who provide us the knowledge and the information that we need to make informed decisions, who respond to our requests for further information, and who respond, more importantly, to the public's needs and demands for holding lawyers accountable and protecting the most vulnerable in our society. That work is truly inspiring to me. I think I've told you all before that I didn't have a whole lot of exposure to what the state bar really did until my appointment. I knew, of course, that we had managed with the bar exam and that we disciplined lawyers, but the depth and the breadth of the work that goes on here daily to make sure that lawyers are doing their job and that our legal system serves everybody who needs it. And that's a struggle, right? I mean, we've talked many, many times about the fact that there is a significant portion of the population who just cannot afford what a lawyer will charge and who do not qualify for free legal services. And there have been efforts for years, and I hope that there will continue to be efforts for years to bridge that gap, right? That the work of this agency and this board will continue to try and meet those needs, whether it's something like the Paraprofessional Working Group, or the Sandbox, or the many other initiatives that this agency has put forward, along with partnering with the legislature and the Supreme Court to make those things happen. I think ultimately we'll get there. My hope for the state bar staff, so I said gratitude and hope, my hope for the staff is that in the face of fiscal constraints and an ever-increasing demand for their services, my hope is that they keep the faith, understanding that their efforts do make a difference, that they're seen, and that they're recognized. With respect to the staff that I have had the privilege to work very closely with, led by Leah. led by Leah, George Cardona, Eileen Dovtian, um, truly the, the level of professionalism and commitment that each of you provides to your respective pieces of the organization are, um, again, impressive. It, it's been, i- i- it's, it's been remarkable to have the things that have happened to this agency over the past, uh, two years. And I'm not going to necessarily list them, and we all know, we all know the challenges. There was a, there was a reference that someone made to like, okay, this year, what's the, what's the surprise gonna be? And that's, that's just the world, right? Um, and, and in a state as big and complex as ours, and when you're talking about, um, a profession charged with, you know, charged with justice, right? Charged with protecting, protecting people, things are going to come up. And the, the passion and the commitment with which George, Eileen, and Leah do their work every day, is, i- is always gonna be inspiring to me. So, thank you all for your hard work. Thank you to all of the many members of your staff that I've worked with over the years who've just, you know, taken my calls and responded to my texts and give me information. Truly, your, your work is, is, um, has made a big difference to, to me and my service on the Board. I, um, I hope that you will continue to engage in that, in that, um, tradition of excellence and that tradition of communication, um, and continue to move the agency forward. I, I've got a lot of gratitude to, to the members of this Board, uh, past and, and, and present, for your commitment in representing, uh, whether you're a public member or an attorney member, representing or appointing agencies, um, or your, or the Governor, because each of us brings something unique to the table, a unique set of experiences, a, a unique way of communicating. Um, and it has been truly, truly just a lot of fun to be a part of that communication with, with all of you, right? We don't always agree, but I think that we always engage in a respectful discussion. Our job as policymakers is to take the information that we're given and to make a decision. And I hope that you will continue to engage in that, um, with, you know, with the challenges that, that, that come. I hope that you will continue the, the trajectory of reform that we've talked about, because it is clear to me that, um, this agency is, is dynamic, it is not static. It, it needs to adapt and respond to the challenges, and, uh, that only happens with active collaboration from each of the members of this Board and communicating with, with our stakeholders, right? We talk about, we talk about our relationship with the Legislature and with the Court, but those are, the, that's a real thing, right? Those relationships really do require nurturing and, and time and commitment. Um, and it's been great to see how so many of this Board have taken that charge up each individually in their own way. And so I, my hope is that you continue to do that, um, communicating with, with each other. Uh, Speaker Rendon, or the former Speaker Rendon, uh, gave me an opportunity to sit on this Board in two thousand eighteen. I'm grateful to him for his, uh, his trust and his support. Uh, Alf Brandt, who is, uh, who was his General Counsel, has been, uh, a wonderful source of encouragement and support to me. Uh, I thank the both of them and wish them well in their future endeavors. The, the countless volunteers who, Mark mentioned, um, Appendix I, and we've heard, uh, we've heard a reference to the various subentities. There was a review of the Sub Entity Sunset, uh, issue a- at the Executive Committee. Astounding to me, the, not, not just dozens, but hundreds of lawyers and judges and non-lawyers who work on, on committees like the CBE and GENE and the, on COPRAC, the Provisional Licenseur Working Group that Hailin mentioned, uh, the Civility Task Force. All of those, all of those endeavors are, are, are run, not run, but they're, they're, they're done by volunteers. People who just, you know, wanna give of their time, of their talent, of their energy and their intellect to make this a better state. Uh, and, and I've been, um, I've been so impressed to see that effort at this level. You know it's out there when you're a lawyer, uh, but to see, uh, and to meet individuals like Justice, Justice Brian Curry and Heather Rosing and Judge Brenda Harbin Forte, just to name a few people, there are so many who, uh, come and give their time and their, and their energy to, to make this a better state. My, my hope is that, uh, they will continue to inspire more, more people, uh, to, to volunteer and to take up this charge of, of this agency. Uh, I wanna thank, um, former Chief Justice, uh, Tani Cantilcakuye, who, uh, provided just, just beautiful leadership, uh, of the judiciary in the state at a time, uh, when the State Bar was, was really facing, uh, existential crises. She was very, uh, vocal about the need, for example, uh, to increase the fees on our licensees so that, for the first time in twenty years, so that this agency could do its job. She always, you know, she always spoke with a, a clarity and a passion and a precision for the justice system in California and recognized the unique role that the State Bar plays in administering that justice system, so I'm grateful to her. She was always so very kind and encouraging to me. I also wanna thank current Chief Justice Batista Garedo for her leadership in, in this new era. Um, I, I think that the Bar partnering with the Court and the Legislature is not only a necessary thing, but a good thing, because each of those constituencies brings a perspective that's needed, um, to deal with the significant problems that, that we face in this country. My hope is that, uh, that the Court and the Legislature and the, and, and this agency continue the relationships and the communication. Uh, I'd like to just thank the law firm that I, I am a partner at, Best Best &amp; Krieger, um, for their unwavering support and patience and, uh, understanding. As I engage in the work of the State Bar, there was never a, a time where I felt like my efforts were not supported, um, or encouraged. And, um, you know, the, when, when there, when a second year as Chair came up, I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure it was gonna necessarily be greeted with, um, you know, with, uh, I don't know what the right word is, open arms? Because it did, it did, it, it was a, a commitment of time, but my colleagues at the firm, um, have been tremendously supportive of me, and I'm grateful to them. I'm grateful to the clients that I work with. The resolution, uh, mentioned them by name, which I think is, is kinda neat, because it has, it always has been my honor and privilege to work for public agencies, right? To understand that government plays a unique role in making life better for people. And the State Bar is a form of, of government, and, uh, my local government clients, um, have been, uh, an inspiration to me, uh, and so I, I thank them all. I wanna thank, uh, my family, my wife Cynthia, my son Diego, his fiancee Emily Oliver, uh, my son Nick, for, for their love and their support and for being sounding boards for me when I needed the, needed the perspective of a public, a member of the public. Because, uh, when you're a lawyer working with and among lawyers, sometimes you, sometimes you just, you need some reality check. It's like, okay, what is, what does this really mean to a person who's not a lawyer? And my family, um, has been really good at providing that reality check for me. They are, uh, they are the reason that I live, and I'm very grateful for, um, all of their love and their support. Um, it's been alluded to that, uh, I will be leaving the Board, so I'm, I'm just making that officially known. I'm following in the tradition of, uh, former Chairs of the Board, at least when I came on the Board, who at the end of their, their tenure as Chair, stepped off the Board, and so this is my last meeting. And it, uh, it is bittersweet, um, but it is immensely gratifying to know that the relationships that we've been able to build with and among each other and with our stakeholders, with the staff, um, that those things are real, they make a difference. And I'm really grateful to have had the opportunity to play a small role in all of that. Thank you all so much. It's lunchtime.
They're clapping for lunch.
So, uh, housekeeping-wise, why don't we reconvene in twenty-six minutes, one o'clock? Grab your food, uh, how's our agenda looking? Okay, we will go right into closed session, so should I make that announcement now? Okay, if you just bear with me, we're gonna be compliant with Bagley Keane, as we love to do. And note that we will be convening in the closed session under the authority of Government Code Section one-one-two-six, Sub C-seven, to consider the items listed on the closed session agenda. The first is the closed session minutes. The second is a discussion regarding the sale price and terms of leasing for one-eighty Howard Street at San Francisco. Thank you all. So, uh, I'm not sure how long the closed session will take. Uh, we can anticipate being back, so being back around two o'clock, between hopefully two and two fifteen to reconvene in open session for those of you who are, uh, waiting to, to participate or to see the Board's discussion on the remaining, remaining open session items. Thank you all. Appears we've got a quorum, and so we are now recording, thank you. Uh, Board of Trustees is back in open session after having, uh, started our closed session discussion on one item. There's nothing reportable from that item with respect to the, uh, the sale of the San Francisco building. We're gonna move right into item seven-oh-two on our open session agenda. This is a report from the Alternative Pathway Working Group, request, and a request to circulate for public comments. This is being presented by Program Director Audrey Ching and, excuse me, Professor Susan Backsheen from Loyola Law School. We're gonna start with, uh, Susan, thank you for being here with us. We're looking forward to hearing, uh, your report of all the good work that's been happening on this important issue.
Thank you. I appreciate the invitation to be here today. I'm Susan Backsheen, I am a professor at Loyola Law School and one of five members of the working group. And I believe Audrey has the slides that she'll be getting up for me. Both, I believe, Professor Mylin Spencer and possibly Dean Natalie Rodriguez, also members of the working group, are possibly able to be here today and are available on Zoom. Today, we present this pro, this proposal, a portfolio for, a portfolio bar exam as an optional licensing path that candidates may choose to demonstrate they possess the full range of knowledge and skills needed for entry-level attorneys. If we can go to the first slide, we can start with the description of the portfolio bar exam. It requires both supervised practice under a California attorney and an independent evaluation by the licensing agency. This proposal contains a framework to carefully construct portfolio requirements that will create a rigorous licensing option. The components are itemized to include both breadth and depth of both knowledge and experience, including client interactions, written communications, along with professional responsibility and found out, and foundational core legal subjects. On the next slide, the portfolio ba- bar exam, the framework is a combination of supervision by a California attorney and the independent assessment of the portfolio. It has several key impacts that are summarized here. First and always key to any licensure is protection of the public. The portfolio bar exam protects the public by requiring an actual demonstration of the skills and knowledge that are needed to be a new attorney. The portfolio bar exam option creates a pathway for applicants who want or need to work immediately upon graduation from law school. The cost savings to applicants is substantial. Those choosing the portfolio bar exam would avoid the lost earnings of unpaid study time and the cost of bar exam preparation programs. And the public impact is particularly helpful to those in underserved legal communities, whether it be an area with few attorneys or those with low or modest incomes that rely on legal services organizations for representation. If we can go to the next slide, we will see that while public protection and cost savings to applicants are important, there are more and equally important benefits of the portfolio bar exam. First is the portfolio bar exam is based on universal design, meaning it creates an environment which is designed to meet the needs of all people who wish to use it. Universal design benefits the State Bar, and it benefits the applicants who will no longer need to request exam accommodations. Exam accommodations are a complicated issue, one without an easy answer. By providing the option of the portfolio bar exam, we could ease those costs while simultaneously designing an option that is more accessible than a traditional exam. While universal design and accessibility are key benefits of the portfolio bar exam option, they are even more impactful because they do so with the protection of licensing only those who have demonstrated the knowledge and skills that are needed to serve the people of California. If we can go to the next slide, thank you, Audrey. We will see the PBE protections. The portfolio bar exam is designed to protect both the public and the applicants who choose this option. While historical programs such as the Canadian articling system can suffer from the societal scourge of discrimination and harassment, the portfolio bar exam has a different design and built-in protections. Applicants would receive compensation during their supervised practice hours, paid similarly to other law school graduates without a law license. Supervisors will be trained, and an applicant who needs to change supervisors for any reason will be allowed to do so. Supervisors are not the decision-makers. Independent examiners will determine whether portfolios are sufficient or not. Applicants and supervisors would attest to the work of the applicant. Applicants would identify the source of their portfolio items. And confidential information would be scrubbed and removed to protect client confidentiality. The portfolio bar exam has additional design protections as well. The details are in the proposal, which summarizes the psychometric experts who helped create the framework for the portfolio bar exam. These experts provided insight to design an option with protections that would ensure the results would be fair, reliable, and valid. Essay exams and multiple choice questions are a proxy for the entry-level skills and knowledge that new attorneys need. The portfolio bar exam is a direct and more comprehensive assessment of the requisite skills and knowledge required for licensure. California is in a strong position to implement this type of authentic and comprehensive assessment. The success of the provisional licensure program is unprecedented. The State Bar's data evidences the successes of that program, and the portfolio bar exam builds upon those accomplishments. The next slide mentions both the pilot process and scaling. California's provisional licensing program provides a pilot option that is both affordable and timely. That, the, the provisional licensing program is set to expire at the end of two thousand twenty-five, with about a hundred participants remaining today. And this, this, it is the recommendation of the PBE that we begin a pilot with those provisionally licensed attorneys that remain. Psychometricians, ex- experts assisted the working group in designing a pilot that would allow the creation of assessment rubrics and test the design of the portfolio bar exam framework. The creation of ex, of assessment rubrics is inexpensive, and other jurisdictions have already begun this work, work which California is poised to build upon with little or no cost. A pilot with the remaining provisionally licensed lawyers would provide data on the- A pilot with the remaining provisionally-licensed lawyers would provide data on the actual cost of the portfolio bar exam, providing accuracy for future budgeting and later scaling of the program. The portfolio bar exam is an option, an alternative pathway. The traditional exam would remain. This enables several scaling options. The provisionally-licensed lawyers are a logical first step. Legal services organizations have existing training programs in place that fit within the proposed framework, and they have expressed interest in scaling the portfolio exam as well. And with all licensing alternatives, whether by portfolio or by traditional examination, everything should be subject to ongoing evaluation to ensure the necessary validity, fairness, and reliability. On the next slide on the portfolio bar exam, I want to wrap up with two points. We ask that the board and the state bar consider the merits of the portfolio bar exam. The framework provides a combination of supervision by a California attorney and an independent assessment of the portfolio to provide greater public protection. The proposal has built-in safeguards, is evidence-based, and has universal design. It reduces artificial barriers to entry and provides greater public protection. And it is the future of licensing. The portfolio bar exam is the type of more comprehensive assessment that other jurisdictions are considering and adopting as we speak. The list on the slide, Georgia, Minnesota, New Hampshire, Nevada, Oregon, Utah, Washington, are all considering or adopting more comprehensive licensing options. With the prior work of the Blue Ribbon Commission and the work of the Alternative Pathway Working Group in the proposal we bring today, California is poised to move into the future of licensing. Thank you for your time today, and we are happy to answer any questions you might have about the portfolio bar exam.
Thank you, Professor Bakshian. Let me ask whether Professors Rodriguez or Spencer have anything to add before we open it up to the Board of Trustees for questions.
I don't have anything to add. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think Susan covered everything. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you.
Likewise. Thank you.
Okay. Trustees, Trustee Good, please.
Good afternoon. Thanks so much for taking the time to come, and I really appreciate the hard work that you all put in to putting this together, because I was one of the folks on the Board of Trustees who thought it was important that we should have something to consider in this vein, and it was disappointing that the Blue Ribbon Commission didn't reach a consensus around this issue. I also was in attendance at the Council on Access and Fairness meeting a few weeks ago where you all presented, and a number of concerns were raised there by COAF, which also culminated in some public commentary that perhaps you've seen, that they submitted to the Board of Trustees, where they're very much opposed to the board moving forward with this proposal at this time. So taking a look at that and also taking a look at some of the other commentary out there, including from the Women Lawyers of Alameda, said they were in favor of this but had some serious concerns. The San Diego La Raza Lawyers Association said something similar. And I'll kind of quote from the Women Lawyers of Alameda's submission, because I think it dovetails a little bit with COAF's concerns, and wanted to get your all's reaction to that. So the Women Lawyers of Alameda said that they were concerned that introducing a separate legal pathway to legal licensure could have unintended consequences. And they encouraged the board to think about, quote, "safeguards" against stigmatizing those who choose this pathway and monitoring the test period to ensure that this additional pathway does not lead to further disparate impacts for women or underrepresented groups. And some of those same sentiments were expressed by COAF as well. And to kind of summarize there, I think it's a really neat concept. We really want California bar licensees to reflect the incredible rich diversity of our California population, and it does not. And this may promote more accessibility and more inclusion, but then it's very disappointing to hear some of these concerns that it might actually have the opposite effect. So I wanted to kind of get your reaction to kind of those comments. So thank you.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I want to address all of your comments, but I also want to suggest that some of the more detailed responses to those concerns can be found in the actual 40-page report itself. And there is a category which addresses the concerns and how the portfolio bar exam would respond to some of those concerns. And in particular, there is material from pages 32 to 41 that addresses some of what I will summarize very quickly right here. The first is, I think as for creating sort of a two-tier system, what I would start by recognizing is that the state bar will not distinguish between licensure methods, and that is recommended in the report, and the state bar has agreed with that recommendation. And whether an applicant was licensed by the portfolio exam or by a traditional exam would not be noted in the public record. Right now, we do not differentiate between attorneys who became licensed in California under different cut scores when there has been a change in cut score in 2020. We also do not differentiate between attorneys who took the three-day exam and those who took the two-day exam, a change that was made in 2017. So this would be much akin to those kinds of changes where you do expand licensing or make a change to licensing, but you do not note it in the public record, and there would be no need to create any kind of a tiered or different system in terms of the licensure method. So the response to that, I would suggest, is that we simply proceed not to identify how a particular person is licensed. And as for whether women and underrepresented groups would somehow be disadvantaged by this type of a system, the experience of the provisional licensing lawyers from the 2020 pandemic actually suggests the exact opposite. The most prevalent users of the provisional licensing pathway that was offered at that time and remains open until 2025 was women and people of color. So in fact, what we have in experience in California in our own system of the provisionally-licensed lawyers, where actually we saw a good result on that front and where we saw that it did not create a second tier, it creates simply a path for those who choose it.
Thank you, Professor. As a reminder to the trustees, what we're being asked to do is to release for public comment for a 30-day period the report. And certainly, it sounds like there is already active interest in this issue and the work of the Alternative Pathways Working Group, so I think that that portends well for future conversation among the board as to options on this issue. Anybody else? Okay. With that, is there a resolution for the board to consider? I will leave it there for you to peruse, essentially releasing this for 30 days, public comment. Trustee Soewell.
I just had a quick question. I know that sometimes we release things for 30, or 45, or 60-day comment. Was there a reason why just 30 days for this one? This is a pretty significant sort of area.
I'm going to look to Audrey to answer that, please.
And 30 days allows us, sorry, can you hear me? 30 days allows us to bring this back to the November 17th board meeting, or 16th and 17th?
I don't think that's the only reason. It has been posted in advance of this meeting, and you saw that you received public comment pursuant to that. And then originally, the Blue Ribbon Commission report itself also posted, and you received comments, so there was, I thought, multiple considerations taken into account.
Trustee Tony, sure.
I have a procedural question. And you can tell me, look, when trustees have ideas or suggestions on design, is it better to present it now? Is it better to wait until after public comment has come back? I'm just asking, what makes more sense?
That is a good question. I will leave it to Audrey or Leah to answer. Well, let me ask a clarifying question, Trustee Tony. But what do you mean on design, like on design of the program ultimately?
Design of the pilot component of this.
Yeah, okay.
I guess it would depend on what your idea is. I don't think, process-wise, I don't want to speak, Susan, for your group, but your group probably wouldn't have the opportunity to consider amending the report. It certainly couldn't come back to the board then, prior to issuing for public comment. If, Mark, you wanted your idea to also go out for public comment, we could just have a separate resolution that added another option for pilot consideration to go out for public comment. Or you could wait for this to come back from public comment, because at that time, you will be asked to transmit something to the Supreme Court, and then the board could do any number of additional resolutions to modify the recommendations presented by this working group in terms of your transmittal to the court. So that's a long answer, but if you want your idea to go out for public comment, we should do a separate resolution with your idea. Otherwise, I'd say wait.
You know what? Let me wait. It's less of a public comment and more of a, how do you design a pilot that has validity to, that's applicable to, you know, your population? That's all.
Thanks for the question and the response. Anything else?
If I could add one thing, I believe, in the interest of time, we skipped some introductory slides about process, which did include one slide to note that in addition to our presentations at COAF and Access and the Commission for Access to Fairness and Justice, we also presented it to the Committee of Bar Examiners, who issued a resolution in support of further exploring this option. And I believe Audrey has a slide with those details. Someone wants to see the actual wording of that provision. And that also, we have also considered their comments, the Committee of Bar Examiners, the Coalition for Access and Fairness, and ATJ.
Thank you, Professor. Audrey, could we see that very quickly?
Yeah, we sure can. And there was public comment at the Committee of Bar Examiners meeting as well. So this was the Council on Access and Fairness, the resolution to delegate authority to Chair and Vice Chair to develop comment, which you had before you today, and then the Committee of Bar Examiners, their resolution here, supporting further exploration of the portfolio bar exam, and asking to be part of that exploration in the future.
Great, thank you very much. Could I get a resolution, excuse me, a motion on the resolution as presented and prepared?
I'll move it.
Motion by Soewell?
I'll second.
Trustee by, excuse me, second by Trustee Tony. If there's no further discussion, can we have the vote?
Broughton?
Yes.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soewell?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye, with my thanks to everybody who worked on this. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Incredible effort.
Oh, sure. Can I call the total?
Sure.
11 ayes, 0 nays. The motion carries.
All right. We'll see you folks back here in November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just trying to do a little bit of looking at the clock and looking at what we've got still substantially left on our agenda. We, we've got a consent calendar, which I think we can forego for the time being. I don't think there's a need to have any action on the consent items today. Looking to staff to confirm that.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Why don't we move over to the board sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee? That takes us to Items 60-1, 2, and 3. We are going to skip over 60-1 until after a closed session, so we'll move on to 60-2, which is a report on the random audit of Office of Chief Trial Counsel files closed. Is this right? Ah, okay. Okay. I stand corrected. I apologize. We're going to do 60-1. Sorry, George.
You can come on up, George.
Because 60-1 is still going to be you.
There's a team effort on 60-1. So Steve, people that are in the room that are going to present on 60-1, if you could come up just to make it efficient.
Thank you. Okay, 60-1 is the Ad Hoc Commission on the Discipline System Recommendations and Status Update.
And you have the presentation, Alfredo? Okay, you can go ahead and put that up, and we should have a couple of other staff members that are being promoted.
So as folks are getting into the queue, this is another example of long-term, multi-faceted effort involving dozens of very hard-working people, including staff and volunteers. So thank you very much for getting us to this point. Leah, please.
All right. So if you can go to the next slide, Tini, I want to just outline the proposed approach. There are a number of elements to this item, as you saw in the written agenda materials. How this presentation is focused around those recommendations, where staff have either developed a number of options for the board to consider, there's significant conflicting or negative feedback from stakeholders that have been consulted in the proposal development process. And by stakeholders, I'm referring to both internal stakeholders and external parties that have been consulted. Or the proposal has a meaningful fiscal impact. So those are the ones that are being highlighted in this presentation. With respect to all of the issues we're going to discuss today, what we're going to discuss or are in the written agenda item, the board is really asked simply to provide feedback. You are not asked to vote on any of these. The idea being, based on your feedback, staff will either continue working up a final recommendation for the board to consider in a voting context, or we would cease work on it altogether. So this is a discussion item only. Based on the criteria outlined in this framing slide, if you could go forward, Tini, these are the items that were actually teed up for discussion. The discipline cost model, which includes monetary sanctions, expungement, both the definition and the timeline for, website removal of discipline history and criminal conviction history, a pre-transmittal early-neutral evaluation conference, and an appointed counsel program. So I just want to pause there and say, if there are any other aspects of the agenda item that board members want to discuss, you could let us know now or later, but these are the items that are actually teed up in this deck. So I'll just pause briefly. Okay. So before we launch into the first area, which is the discipline cost model, I do want to give a special thanks to Trustees Buena Ventura and Good, who were both served on the Ad Hoc Commission and met with this large team of staff that worked on the various proposals that are in the item that you are considering today. And so to that end, I have asked them to both be prepared to step in and facilitate board discussion on these respective proposal elements. So how this will work is for each topic area, the staff who was responsible for drafting the proposal will go over some of the key issues, then will provide an outline of the proposal itself, and then we hope to have a little bit of board discussion so you can weigh in with your views. So with that in mind, let's go to the discipline cost model, and this is Lisa Chavez. Thank you. You're on mute.
Hi, good afternoon, trustees. Pleased to share with you an update on the discipline cost model proposal. So as you all know, the President's Department of Commerce directs the state bar to recover costs of disciplining attorneys, including costs for hearing and review, and this is outlined very clearly in statute. And the Ad Hoc Commission reviewed the state bar's discipline cost model and expressed several concerns, notably that the California's discipline cost is the highest in the nation. And the cost model appears to penalize attorneys for choosing multi-day trials and appealing their cases to justice. trials and appealing their cases to review. As you can see in Table 1 of your agenda item, costs associated with original matters disposed with multi-day trials and the review department are the highest discipline costs imposed. And another thing that the commission noted was that boards overseen by the Department of Consumer Affairs, including the Medical Board of California, are prevented in statute for recovering costs associated with trial. And finally, the commission noted that there's no mechanism in place for the gale fees in cases where a respondent who is disciplined but ultimately prevails on some charges. And so the commission recommended that the State Bar review the discipline cost model in two ways. One, figure out how to restructure the model so that attorneys are not penalized for going to trial and review, and also to figure out how it's possible to scale fees in cases where the respondent prevails on some charges. Now, per this board's direction, staff reviewed the implications of both of these ideas with two key internal stakeholders, the State Bar Court and the OCTC. And we received the following feedback. Both the State Bar Court and the OCTC expressed concern that eliminating costs associated with trial and review would lead to more trials, and that in turn would really impact their staff resources and potentially cause significant delays in cases positions. And then obviously, they also expressed concern and argued that the court should retain some discretion to impose costs on respondents, especially in cases where the court, for example, finds evidence that is very overwhelming against respondent, and in respondent, they, for example, lacked candor during proceedings or were dishonest. If you can go to the next slide, please. Okay, great. So in lieu of simply changing the cost model to eliminate staff, eliminate costs associated with trial review, instead, staff proposed the following. Revise rules so that the court has more discretion. In particular, the court has discretion to waive costs, but at the same time, retain the ability to impose full costs for trial and review in appropriate circumstances. Example of those circumstances are those that I just described. Another option that the court will have, again, changing rules to give them this discretion, is to reduce costs for trials and review based on all circumstances, including, but not limited to, when a respondent substantially prevails in court. And there's examples of what substantially prevails in court, it looks like in your agenda items, please note that we also reached out to an external stakeholder, the ADDC, and they provided examples of that. Staff also conducted a fiscal impact on this proposal, and we estimate that the maximum annual fiscal impact would be around $350,000 in reduced cost assessments. It's really clear to be clear, it's assessment's not necessarily money received, because we also know that for the, we receive, say, for example, only 5% of a cost assessed against attorneys who are disbarred, for example. So ultimately, this is a maximum fiscal impact of around $350,000 in reduced cost assessments. Okay, so staff would be very interested in knowing how the board agrees with this proposed alternative approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Trying to figure out who is, who is next here. Sarah?
Not sure if I'm supposed to speak, or OCTC. So what I will say about this particular change that's very significant is, in the past, it was all automatically assessed, and so I think folks thought that that definitely had a chilling effect on attorneys of limited means.
Trustee Good, could I trouble you to pull your mic closer? It's really hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I was going to say, vis a vis this particular provision, under the current regime, the costs are automatically assessed. There's absolutely no discretion to the State Bar Court to consider the individual facts and circumstances of the underlying case and whether or not it would be appropriate to assess cost. And so as part of the ad hoc commission, we heard from folks that they felt, particularly people of limited means, who potentially could be looking at tens of thousands of dollars in costs if they lost, that it might have a chilling effect on their ability to challenge what they viewed as unmeritorious claims. So there was kind of a uniform sort of consensus that we wanted to do something so that they were not automatically applied. And I think, you know, the current proposal now gives the discretion to the State Bar Court to impose costs where appropriate under the facts and circumstances of the case. And so that leaves OCTC with a discretion to seek imposition of costs or not, and it permits the licensee who's before the State Bar Court to argue that costs shouldn't be imposed, but I think does represent a significant improvement over the current regime and addresses a lot of the concerns that were raised before the ad hoc commission.
Thank you. Any questions or additional?
I'll just say that, you know, I think one of the things that we, one, one theme that we were also really focused on was this, the whole issue of eliminating barriers. And I think this does go a long way in terms of fairness, in terms of people being able to assert their rights and have their day in court without feeling like they're going to be punished somehow if they don't end up prevailing. So I think in terms of eliminating barriers for people to be more unafraid and have this more fair process to them, I think this goes a long way.
Thank you. Trustee Tony, please.
I do have some concerns about this proposal. So one is, anytime you provide discretion as opposed to a single standard that is applied automatically, as was earlier explained, you just, you just run the risk of uneven and unfair application. So it's just, you open yourself up to that in a way that having a consistent process that's understood, and the only question is, were the crit, you know, it's according to formula, it's according to criteria. So I think that's one thing. I would be concerned that having discretion would open up the State Bar Court system to more complaints about, well, I should have gotten a waiver, when, because other people got waivers, it wasn't fair, and it adds another complication. These are attorneys we're talking about. I can't imagine that any attorney who knows that there is a waiver would not apply for the waiver, and if they didn't get it, would not complain about not getting it. I don't know, but that's what I think attorneys are supposed to do, is if they see an opportunity, they're supposed to try to go for it. That, that's my view of what a good attorney does. So I have concerns about that. And I'm just not, I am more concerned, I mean, you know, people in general, you know, the general public, I think, has much more of an issue of trying to figure out how to, you know, get attorneys when they need their legal needs met. And, you know, you know, the fact that, well, some attorneys feel that they don't have an opportunity to get, you know, full due process because of the expense, I think is a common feature of the system that we, that's constructed. And so I'm not, I just don't support special treatment for attorneys.
Mr. Cardona, I think, had a reaction or a potential answer to trustee Tony's original point, or first point, rather.
Yeah, as to the first point on discretion, I mean, I understand the concern, and obviously that's a concern with the court. The court also faces that concern when it's choosing what level of discipline to impose, which involves an exercise of significant discretion, since there are guidelines, but the court essentially looks at a combination of factors and other things to exercise discretion there. So in that sense, giving that same discretion for costs, just as they have that discretion with discipline, while I understand the issues, it's something that the State Bar Court is accustomed to dealing with, and explaining why they are doing what they are doing, which then satisfies the discretionary requirements. So while I understand that concern, it is the State Bar Court that's ultimately going to have that discretion, and they are used to exercising that discretion and avoiding disparate treatment of the individuals before them.
And if I could, I would just add that this is all happening in the context of an adversarial proceeding anyway, right? And so the OCTC on the one side and the respondent, especially if they're represented by counsel, would ideally sort of work at opposing sides to ensure that the court is exercising that discretion in a reasonable manner. Sarah, please.
Also, it sort of bears mentioning that some of the judges on the State Bar Court expressed frustration that it was automatic, that in certain cases, it would have been completely warranted to have waived costs, and they didn't have the ability to do that, their hands were tied. So they're definitely, you know, the State Bar Court itself is supportive of this change as well, for good and with good reason. Thank you.
Trustee Soewell, please.
Could you just say a little bit more in the, in the key issues part of the, the presentation? It said State Bar out of line with DCA boards and penalizing respondents for going to trial. And just sort of what struck me about that, I just, just to say a little bit more about that, because I was just trying to understand sort of the apples-to-apples comparison, whether or not that was an apples-to-apples comparison there, or should be.
Lisa, can you?
Sure. Sure. So statute directs the State Bar, State Bar to collect discipline, other costs of disciplining attorneys, and it's very specified through hearing and review. In contrast, statute directs boards overseen by the DCA, Department of Consumer Affairs, Medical Board of California is one of them. It's very explicit that they are to collect costs involved in disciplining people of various professions, but it can only go up to the day of the trial. And so that's the difference between the two boards, for example, like the State Bar Court and the Department of Medical Board of California, is that both are directed to seek a recovery of costs of discipline. However, the State Bar is directed to put costs up to disciplinary review, and the Medical Board of California, for example, it's only up to the first day of trial, up to the day of trial. So it doesn't include trial.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Anyone else? Okay, the next subtopic on this, I believe, is monetary sanctions.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Suzanne Grant from the Office of General Counsel. So currently, the legislature provides that monetary sanctions may be awarded by this, ordered by the Supreme Court in matters of suspension, disbarment, or resignation with charges pending. And that statute, Business and Professions Code 686.13, provides that the State Bar has to adopt guidelines implementing the imposition of sanctions. And the statute also provides that the sanctions shall be deposited into the client security fund. So in April of 2020, the State Bar promulgated State Bar Rule of Procedure 5.137 that had guidelines for the sanctions imposition, and they proposed recommended amounts for disbarment, suspension, and resignation with charges pending, as well as provisions for waiver for financial considerations. The ad hoc committee recommended, based on their study of other jurisdictions, noting that California was the only state in the jurisdictions they assessed to impose monetary sanctions. They felt that the sanctions were very high. In fact, they're in addition to discipline costs, and as well as the sanctions are punitive in nature, whereas the discipline system is, you know, for public protection, rehabilitation, and deterrence. So their recommendation was to seek a statutory amendment to eliminate monetary sanctions. The board resolved that staff would assess whether that a statutory amendment was necessary. So staff did review, did take, take that into account, and concluded that while a statutory amendment would be required to eliminate sanctions entirely, because of the nature of the statute says that they're discretionary, we could amend the rule that has the guidelines to make sanctions much more difficult under different circumstances to implement the committee's objectives. So our proposal would be to amend Rule 5.137 to make it such that the default for sanctions would be zero in cases of suspension and resignation with charges pending, and in cases of disbarment, it would significantly reduce the maximum amount from what was $5,000 to $1,000. And it would also emphasize that the Supreme Court does have the inherent authority to order more than that amount up to the statutory maximum. We did reach out to stakeholders about that proposal, and State Bar Court's position was that they agree with the committee's recommendation that a statute should be repealed. However, if it was not repealed, they would agree with the proposal to have sanctions only in disbarment cases up to $1,000. Notably, they indicated that they did not even want the discretion to impose sanctions in cases of suspension or resignation with charges pending. OCTC, however, indicated that they would want the rule to still have discretion in it for State Bar Court to impose the sanctions as they see fit in cases of resignation and suspension. So they had a slightly different view, and George can elaborate that on that if you would like. And lastly, ADDC was supportive as well of having sanctions only in disbarment cases and the proposal for the sanction amount to be $1,000. So that, that's our recommendation, is to propose these amendments. I will just add that the rule does have to be approved by the Supreme Court under Business and Professions Code 686.13.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Trustees Good or Buena Ventura, you're supposed to be facilitating this, I just realized, I apologize, so I'll let you do that.
Well, I thought the staff presented the issue really well, and why we landed where we landed, to avoid a statutory amendment, but to try to accommodate everybody's interests. I don't know if OCTC wants to say anything about this.
So first, no objection to reducing the presumptive amount of sanctions, which is what's set out in the rule. So the way that, way it currently works is, the rule that the Board of Trustees passed sets out a presumption level of, presumptive level of sanctions for each of the three different types of discipline. Suspension, resignation with charges pending, or disbarment. Those amounts are fairly high. So no objection to reducing the presumptive amount for disbarment to $1,000, no, no objection to reducing.